You need me to get started, Jennifer?
Okay.
Uh, no, I have my computer.
In fact, I could've just had mine.
Okay, welcome everybody. We're gonna get started. Welcome everybody to our board meeting. Tom, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Bose.
Present.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Groger.
Here.
Dr. King. Ms. Martinez.
Here.
Ms. Pascuali.
Here.
Mr. Van Hees, here. You have a call.
Thank you. The Open Public Meeting Act authorizes the Board of Education to meet in executive session under certain circumstances. The Open Public Meeting Act requires the Board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting to go into private session. This evening, the Lawrence Township Board of Education will meet in executive session to discuss the following items. First, matters of personal confidentiality rights, including but not limited to staff and/or student discipline matters. And specifically this evening, board member interviews. We will also be discussing HIB and a special education settlement, as well as terms and conditions of employment for staff member or members. Formal action will not be taken in exec session, and it should last approximately 45 minutes. It will be a little bit longer tonight than it normally is because we have a lot of things to do. And can I have a motion to go into exec session?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
With stereo.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom. You figure that one out.
Yeah, yeah.
You were like, right, right? You're like, right. Right, yeah.
I told your cell phones off. Sometimes I tell your cell phones off. Just take your cell phones off. Cell phones off. Cell phones off everybody. It's getting a lot of...
It's like, I don't know. Where you're gonna hear that?
Okay. Welcome, everybody. Thank you. Sorry we were running a little bit late in executive session this evening. We had a lot of business as it's our last school board meeting of the school year. The announcement of the open public meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. As required under law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided via email and our fax to The Times, The Ledger, the public library, and has been filed with the municipal clerk. This notice was provided prior to the 48 hours required by the Open Public Meeting Act. The Board reserves the right to limit public discussion of personnel items and other matters as defined in the law. We'll have our flag salute.
(Inaudible)
Oh, it used to be over there.
They're supposed to be this way. We've had them backwards.
Okay. Peer leaders, you're up first.
Hi, I'm Rashni. I'm a current junior. I wanted to talk about an important event we're having this Saturday, Culture Fest, if you guys may know. We are International Alliance is having this big event, and we're gonna have a bunch of performances, so I wanted to tell you guys about where the money is going for Culture Fest. We are donating it to two organizations. One is called No More Tears, which is an organization to help with those who suffer from domestic abuse and violence. And we're donating it to another one called Access Life America, which helps provide free shelters for underprivileged children undergoing cancer treatment.
Oh, very nice.
Hello. I'm Christian Galanoff, and I'm gonna be speaking about the Science Olympiad team that we have. Recently, our season ended, but our competitions ended a while back. Recently, we got the highest place we've actually had at our state tournament. We got 10th place, and we got two medals at the state tournament, and then also we got six medals at our regional tournament, so.
Woo! Congratulations.
My name is Ria Keist, and I want to talk about the school store. So this year, the school store throughout the duration of the year, they did a very well job of keeping sales high and promoting school spirit. And this year, a brand new social media account was introduced on Instagram, which helped us connect with more people and generate more sales. And now the school store will close in two days for the rest of the year, and it'll reopen again in September of the next school year.
Hello, my name is Deidre Leonardo. I'm also a junior. And this past week, LHS has been holding student elections. So those who are running for student council have been preparing and presenting speeches for the entire school. And then those who are running for student, or class officers, they're presenting it to their class. And it's really been promoting more of a thoughtful election and school spirit as people are showing up and showing out for their peers.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right. You're welcome to stay, or you may leave if you have something more important to do, which I'm sure you do. Recognition and acknowledgements.
So I'm gonna turn your attention towards the back of the room. First up, we have our National History Day club members, Ryan McKino, Vivek Mahabir, and Daniel McNeese. Their advisor, Ms. Priscilla Taylor, could not be here with us tonight, but we want to welcome these three students up towards the back of the room. And we're just asking for your attention so they can run us through their amazing presentation and their project that they are here tonight to present to the board.
Can he take this? Mike?
We have a wireless mic. One second, honey. We have a wireless mic.
Not on.
And I'd like to briefly explain to everyone what National History Day is. National History Day is an annual competition where students are given a theme, and they pick a topic that fits that theme. And this year's theme is rights and responsibilities. And students are tasked with making a project that defends why their topic fits the year's theme. So students will make projects that explain why it fits their theme, or fits a theme. And projects, or the projects can be documentaries, performances, papers, websites, or like what we did, which was the exhibit. And the students will compete at the regional, state, and national level. Right now, actually, our senior group documentary was able to make it first place in the state for group documentaries. So they're in Maryland right now, competing against the rest of the, from other students from around the world.
Woo-hoo! Wow!
Our school has participated in National History Day for, I think, 13 years now. And out of those 13 years, we're able to make it to nationals 12 out of those 13 years. And our exhibit is about Seabrook Farms, a farm in New Jersey that was able to, that took in Japanese Americans during World War II, giving them better opportunities than they would have had in internment camps. With our project, we were able to make third place in the state for group exhibits. And my teammate, Vivek Mahabir, will explain more about what our project is.
Hello, I'm Vivek, and I'm the secretary of the National History Day Club. So a bit more about Seabrook Farms itself is that it was founded in 1911 by Charles Seabrook. And during World War II, it was a major farm. It was the major key supplier of food for the military. And then because of World War II, Charles Seabrook's workers were drafted into the war. So he had to figure out a way to get workers. And what he did was he took Japanese interns from the camps and put them to work, giving them, I think it was 50 cents per hour, which was at the time, I think, minimum wage. So he gave them work, he gave them housing, and he improved their lives from what they had in the concentration camps. And this gave him, this allowed Japanese Americans to create their own culture in South Jersey, which is where Seabrook Farms is. It's in Bridgeton. So the Japanese culture flourished in South Jersey, and especially in Bridgeton, where even eventually a Buddhist temple was created for these Japanese Americans. And I'd like to pass this off to my teammate, Daniel.
Before I get started about the importance of our board, I'd like to thank Larry Erickson, the curator of the Seabrook Farms Educational Center. So on the side closest to me, it's about the stuff before. Seabrook Farms took the Japanese internment camp interns. So first is Pearl Harbor, and, you know, that's the catalyst for Japanese Americans getting interned in the camps. Yeah, and this is just background stuff about where Seabrook Farms is and what it was about. The middle board, it was the importance that it had on the community in that time. So like, he helped create a lot of jobs for the Japanese Americans, and he really helped the community by, he helped the community by, he gave it a lot of diversity. And the members of the camp had a lot of freedoms compared to the camps. They were even allowed to leave the farms and go shopping. They could even exercise their freedom of religion. They had their own temple at Seabrook Farms. And on the side closest to Vivek and Ryan, it's the impact on the world as we see it now. It had a lot of impact on New Jersey. It's one of the major reasons there's so many... And he, the members of the camp had a lot of freedoms compared to the camps. They were even allowed to leave the farms and go shopping. They could even exercise their freedom of religion. They had their own temple at Seabrook Farms. And on the side closest to Vivek and Ryan, it's the impact on the world as we see it now. It had a lot of impact on New Jersey. It's one of the major reasons there's so many Asian-Americans here in New Jersey. And it really helped kind of blend two cultures together with Japanese and American culture.
So if you'd like to see our Board after the meeting's done, it'd be right here. We also have some flyers here that, if you would want to take. But again, thank you to Mr. Erickson for driving all the way up here from Bridgeton.
Thank you so much. So well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm the executive director of the Seabrook Educational Cultural Center. We have a quite a dynamic museum down in Seabrook, New Jersey, which is right in the area of Bridgeton. And actually, we had 2,500 Japanese-Americans come from those internment camps to be able to come to the East Coast and work. They were kind of sponsored by Seabrook Farms. And it was a timing when the development of frozen vegetables made Seabrook Farms the largest vegetable-producing factory. It was like a Henry Ford of the food industry. The leading producer of frozen vegetables was right there. And this museum honors many different cultures that came. There were 25 different cultures that came from all over the world. The displaced persons camps after the war, and it was quite a, it was a global village at the time. So it made it a unique place to live and work, but it was a time when some of these lessons that were learned there at Seabrook Farms kind of get a little recycled because the Japanese-Americans, of course, were rounded up because of an executive order by Franklin Dela Worth Roosevelt and interned. And the people that came from Europe, they were like refugees that came from Estonia and Latvia and Poland. And they were able to come to the United States and start a new life. So that's why it was an example of what can work even under dire circumstances. So our museum is open during the week, and you're all welcome to come down and have a tour. So thank you for letting us explain what happened. And thank you to this group of wonderful young lads who put this wonderful exhibit together. Thank you.
Thank you for traveling to be with us. I just want to wish our seniors, Jaya, Matthew, and Rashith, good luck as they represent Lawrence, New Jersey, of course, our school, at the national level at the University of Maryland this week. So congratulations to the three of you back there, and thank you for a wonderful display.
Thank you so much. That was fantastic. Retiree recognition. We're going to take a short break for refreshments and photos to present our gifts to our retirees.
So I think Pepper and Joanne, you'll be joining me to read the names.
Okay.
Oh, video? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Baldessari, for the beautiful video. We, a lot of the retirees had some conflicts this evening, but we do have some that are in the audience. So I'm going to invite Ms. Evans and Ms. Gregor up with me and Ms. Bose so we can deliver some gifts. And then we'll take a short break for some refreshments in the back, and then we'll get on with our business. Thank you.
We all ready? All right, when you hear your name, please join us up front. We'd like to welcome and invite Sheila Carnaval to come on up, please. Thank you, Sheila.
19 years.
Hi, Bernadette. Thank you. You bet. Bernadette? Yes, we went too quickly. We're going to slow down. And next, with 19 years, Judy Akidia. Would you please come on up?
Next up is Karen O'Brien, five and a half years.
Congratulations. With 20 years and seven months, would Donna Purdine come on up, please? No, Donna? She didn't make it? All right, so we'll move on. You want to do our last one, then? You wanted to do this one. We fought over this one.
A woman who had both of my kids and lived to tell about it. Erica Smoots, 31 years.
No, Erica. We love you, Erica.
Did I tell you? Erica and I are classmates together. Oh, yeah. Lately.
Thank you very much. I'm the executive director of the Seabrook Educational Cultural Center. We have a quite a dynamic museum down in Seabrook, New Jersey, which is right in the area of Bridgeton. And actually, we had 2,500 Japanese-Americans come from those internment camps to be able to come to the East Coast and work. They were kind of sponsored by Seabrook Farms. And it was a timing when the development of frozen vegetables made Seabrook Farms the largest vegetable-producing factory. It was like a Henry Ford of the food industry. The leading producer of frozen vegetables was right there. And this museum honors many different cultures that came. There were 25 different cultures that came from all over the world. The displaced persons camps after the war, and it was quite a, it was a global village at the time. So it made it a unique place to live and work, but it was a time when some of these lessons that were learned there at Seabrook Farms kind of get a little recycled because the Japanese-Americans, of course, were rounded up because of an executive order by Franklin Dela Worth Roosevelt and interned. And the people that came from Europe, they were like refugees that came from Estonia and Latvia and Poland, and they were able to come to the United States and start a new life. So that's why it was an example of what can work even under dire circumstances. So our museum is open during the week, and you're all welcome to come down and have a tour. So thank you for letting us explain what happened, and thank you to this group of wonderful young lads who put this wonderful exhibit together. Thank you.
Thank you for traveling to be with us. I just want to wish our seniors, Jaya, Matthew, and Rashith, good luck as they represent Lawrence, New Jersey, of course, our school, at the national level at the University of Maryland this week. So congratulations to the three of you back there, and thank you for a wonderful display.
Thank you so much. That was fantastic. Retiree recognition. We're going to take a short break for refreshments and photos to present our gifts to our retirees. So I think Pepper and Joanne, you'll be joining me to read the names.
Okay.
Oh, video? Oh, sorry.
Hi, can have the Board members come back up to the front, please? We have to get back to our agenda. including the board and many community members. And I just look forward to the next few years of really amazing things happening in our district. And it is a lot of work. And I, I hope the public understands how much effort has been put forth so far. And we will be reporting out on a regular basis, but a lot has already happened. And Dr. Clem and Tom have already been really working hard on setting us up for the next steps of the reconfiguration of the district. Thank you to everybody for a great school year. And I wish everybody a good summer and a restful rejuvenation. And this evening, we have two important things that we're going to do. The first will be, we will be nominating a new vice president as Amanda Santos is no longer on the board. And we will be also selecting a new board member. And at first, I would like to, I will be accepting any nominations for the vice president.
I would like to nominate Pepper Evans.
And? Seconds? Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. Tom?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Groger?
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Evans, I had to skip you there for a second. Dr. King?
Yes.
Is that me?
That's me, yes. I didn't hear.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Pascoli?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees?
Yes.
Ms. Bose?
Yes.
And Ms. Evans, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you, with honor.
Congratulations, Pepper. You may come and join us.
I'm sorry, I have to leave you, Tom.
I know, I know.
Hold down the fort without me.
I'm gonna get a flat Stanley of you right there.
Okay. In addition, we will be, would like to select our new board member. Would a member of the board like to make a motion to appoint a new board member?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mackenzie Kelly.
Second?
A motion on the floor by Ms. Pascoli, seconded by Mr. Van Hees.
Yes.
Would you like me to call the roll?
Please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Groger?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Pascoli?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees?
Yes.
Ms. Bose?
Yes.
Your motion carried?
Thank you, and welcome to Mackenzie Kelly. I just would like to say to all of our candidates, Paul, Teresa, and JD, all of you are outstanding candidates. And it was a privilege for me to get to know you and to share your life and your interests with us and to put your name forward for the board. It is super commendable. And I would encourage you all to think about running for our next election. We need more people on our board. We want our community to be involved.
I'm gonna need a running mate.
Pepper's gonna need a, a running mate. And, you know, the board, every year, has three seats that are up for election. And I, I saw all of you as our future. I saw you as the future of the board and the future for this community. So thank you so much. And please know, all of us were overwhelmed by all of your qualifications and your passion and your personalities. And we wish we could take you all, but at this time, we only have one seat open. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. And just so the, the public knows sort of the process that we went through as a board to select a board member. We posted our position in the newspaper, in Quick News. We had it on our website, and we announced it at the Mayor's Task Force. We had a night, a really unbelievable response of 12 potential candidates. I did speak with all of them, and we kind of figured out which folks were aligned with what we have to offer and what we were looking for, and had the understanding of what the board's role and responsibilities are. And we came up in the end with the four candidates that are here. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody in the community knows the effort that was put forth by our candidates. And thank you from the board and from the administration. And congratulations, Mackenzie. I would love for you to come up and just share with us and the community a little bit about yourself, if you, if you would so like. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you so very much for this just honor and opportunity to serve my hometown. So I am thrilled about that. And to all of our community members, I am Mackenzie Kelly. I am a proud graduate, 2011, and really excited to be representing not only my class, not only many, many, many of my friends, my husband, and my little future Cardinals who will be entering in kindergarten. But I just, this community has made me who I am, and I just can't wait to give back to it in the way that it deserves. So thank you for having me, and I will serve you to the best of my abilities.
Thank you so much, Mackenzie. All right. All right. Next. Liaison reports.
Okay. Student board member. Okay, I'm gonna start with, student board member.
Edison.
I thought you said school board.
Oh, no, sorry.
That's why I heard.
It's Edison's last go for it.
Board out, Edison.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This will be my last meeting as the 2024-2025 student representative. And thus, I would like to thank everyone who has supported me over the course of this school year. First, I would like to thank all of my peers and student council members who played a crucial role in assisting with gathering student feedback and discussing board initiatives. Namely, at the beginning of the year, Isabella Herrera, Gia Ravencar, Joe Faiman, Peyton Valentino, and Sophia Boone, who all assisted in gathering feedback from other schools in our district. Next, I would like to thank all of the teachers, administrators, and guidance counselors who have supported me in various significant ways throughout my high school journey and in this position. I would like to specifically mention Dr. Pankos, Dr. Clark, and Ms. Resenio for their invaluable guidance in navigating this position. I also appreciate the help of Ms. Welsh and Mr. Kradunas for opening doors and making opportunities possible for me, as well as the consistent and continued support of Dr. Adam and Dr. Williams. Finally, I would like to thank the entire Board of Education, especially, especially Dr. Clem, for their time, support, and encouragement to rise to this wonderful challenge and get all that I can out of it. From this position, I've learned much about leadership, working within an existing system on progressive initiatives and the general mechanics of how our district functions. Plus, this position has made me a more competent writer and speaker. For these reasons and many more, I'm grateful to have had this experience. I would next like to share my hopes and ideas for how the role of student representative might evolve in the future. I believe that this position could benefit from greater structure regarding the type of feedback desired, such as a prompt or list of prompts that would allow for the pursuit of a research project for the student representative to report on as changes are made within the district. For example, as a district, particularly, particularly the high school begins to introduce school-appropriate applications of AI into classes in the coming year, the student representative, you know, might have the opportunity to, or could be directed to gather students' opinions on how AI is being implemented, so what students like, dislike, et cetera. Additionally, for gathering feedback at other schools in our district, an official framework would help organize meetings with other student councils, or an official framework to organize meetings for other student councils would be of great assistance. An idea would be to have set dates where the student representative attends student council meetings at two different schools in our district per month, so that they can hold discussions with and hear from the opinions of younger students in an official and organized manner. With my final words, I would also like to welcome Redima into, as the next year's student representative. And I can confidently say, knowing her, that this role has incredible potential in her hands. I see the future, and it is bright. Thank you.
Edison, I just want to say thank you so much. I think you really exemplar. You've been an example of be the change. So you took on a role that was very new. But you were really admirable how you brought all the different voices of students. And you did that not just in a haphazard way. Like, you created ways for us to be more connected with students from all over the district. And I really admired that about you. And I also think there were setbacks, and you really saw how to kind of move an organization, a large one, that is open to change, but sometimes slow. So I really appreciated you all year, and we will miss you, but are excited about the future as well.
Thank you so much.
Lawrence Township Education Fund and New Jersey School Board Association.
Didn't mean to step on your table.
No worries.
Oh, it's gonna be difficult to look there and not see you, but thank you. Okay, I'll start with, I do my reports in the order that I go to meetings, because it helps me to keep organized. On May 31st, 8:45 a.m., New Jersey School Headquarters in Trenton, we had our legislative meeting, which I sent an email with everyone for the Cliff Note version, so I won't go into that. We had an opportunity to listen to Craig J. Coughlin, Deputy Executive Director for the General Assembly Majority Office. He was a guest speaker that morning. He served 12 years on his local school board as well. So he brought a different perspective than most of the legislators that we listened to speak. He gave us over an hour, took any questions, explained. I really want us to stay in close contact with him. The highlights, governmental relations, staff updates, Jonathan Pushman, updates on proposed FYI 2026 state budget, promotion of NJ SBA's Capital Watch Newsletter, which I've talked about in previous meetings. Recently signed education laws, education-related legislation that's been considered by legislature since March 2025. And our next meeting will be Saturday, September 27th. It's like, why? We haven't even gone through the summer yet, but in person at headquarters. Mercer County School Boards met to plan for next year. And we have our calendar and our topic set. Our first meeting will be, like always, here at Lawrence, and we're gonna try in this room, which I think the acoustics will be way better. And the count, the topic is AI. Very timely. So mark your calendars. And the other ones, you'll, you'll see, I'll hold the date. LTEF, we, Neil Desai and I attended the meeting June 6th, 8 a.m., in the tech center before the evacuation drill occurred. That was fun. We both extended our appreciation for the members' time, spent reading and making decisions over the many submitted grants for this year. We discussed the VR event at LIS. It was a huge success. Side note, I enjoyed watching Ms. Chell Bose repair a pool filter and hearing Neil ask if he could step down off the roof and only realized he had to take the goggles off. It was great. The trustees are a dedicated, compassionate group of people who add depth and connection between our school and community. Many thanks to Bonnie Giglio and her keen leadership. I like that word, keen. She sure is amazing. A tease for next year events. September 6th will be a first annual fun run, and November 14th will be handbag bingo. Project Graduation, I'm sure some of you have already seen. You can enter in a drawing for reserved VIP seating at the Cure Arena. Up to 15 family members per winning ticket, and they're gonna draw two. So go to the website, Project Graduation website in order to enter this drawing. And that's my report.
Thank you. Student Services?
Student Services was held on June 5th. In attendance was Vanessa Bacarsak and myself, Arindol Clark. Items to highlight, the committee discussed current open positions within the Student Services Department, as well as those that have already been successfully filled. who have supported me in various significant ways throughout my high school journey and in this position. I would like to specifically mention Dr. Pankos, Dr. Clark, and Mr. Senio for their invaluable guidance in navigating this position. I also appreciate the help of Ms. Welsh and Mr. Kudunas for opening doors and making opportunities possible for me, as well as the consistent and continued support of Dr. Adam and Dr. Williams. Finally, I would like to thank the entire Board of Education, especially Dr. Clem, for their time, support, and encouragement to rise to this wonderful challenge and get all that I can out of it. From this position, I've learned much about leadership, working within an existing system on progressive initiatives, and the general mechanics of how our district functions. Plus, this position has made me a more confident writer and speaker. For these reasons and many more, I'm grateful to have had this experience. I would next like to share my hopes and ideas for how the role of student representative might evolve in the future. I believe that this position could benefit from greater structure regarding the type of feedback desired, such as a prompt or list of prompts that would allow for the pursuit of a research project for the student representative to report on as changes are made within the district. For example, as a district, particularly the high school begins to introduce school-appropriate applications of AI into classes in the coming year, the student representative, you know, might have the opportunity to, or could be directed to gather students' opinions on how AI is being implemented, so what students like, dislike, et cetera. Additionally, for gathering feedback at other schools in our district, an official framework would help organize meetings with other student councils, or an official framework to organize meetings for other student councils would be of great assistance. An idea would be to have set dates where the student representative attends student council meetings at two different schools in our district per month so that they can hold discussions with and hear from the opinions of younger students in an official and organized manner. With my final words, I would also like to welcome Redima into, as the next year's student representative, and I can confidently say, knowing her, that this role has incredible potential in her hands. I see the future and it is bright. Thank you.
Edison, I just want to say thank you so much. I think you really exemplar. You've been an example of be the change, so you took on a role that was very new. But you were really admirable how you brought all the different voices of students. And you did that not just in a haphazard way, like you created ways for us to be more connected with students from all over the district. And I really admired that about you. And I also think there were setbacks and you really saw how to kind of move an organization, a large one, that is open to change, but sometimes slow. So, I really appreciated you all year and we will miss you, but are excited about the future as well.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Lawrence Township Education Fund and New Jersey School Board Association.
Didn't mean to step on your table.
No worries.
Oh, it's gonna be difficult to look there and not see you, but thank you. Okay, I'll start with, I do my reports in the order that I go to meetings because it helps me to keep organized. On May 31st, 8:45 a.m., New Jersey School Headquarters in Trenton, we had our legislative meeting, which I sent an email with everyone for the CliffNote version, so I won't go into that. We had an opportunity to listen to Craig J. Coughlin, Deputy Executive Director for the General Assembly Majority Office. He was a guest speaker that morning. He served 12 years on his local school board as well, so he brought a different perspective than most of the legislators that we listened to speak. He gave us over an hour, took any questions, explained. I really want us to stay in close contact with him. The highlights, governmental relations, staff updates, Jonathan Pushman, updates on proposed FYI 2026 state budget, promotion of NJ SBA's Capital Watch Newsletter, which I've talked about in previous meetings. Recently signed education laws, education-related legislation that's been considered by legislature since March 2025. And our next meeting will be Saturday, September 27th. It's like, why? We haven't even gone through the summer yet, but in person at headquarters. Mercer County School Boards met to plan for next year. And we have our calendar and our topic set. Our first meeting will be, like always, here at Lawrence and we're gonna try in this room, which I think the acoustics will be way better. And the topic is AI, very timely. So, mark your calendars and the other ones, you'll see a hold the date. LTEF, we, Neil Desai and I, attended the meeting June 6th, 8 a.m., in the tech center before the evacuation drill occurred. That was fun. We both extended our appreciation for the members' time, spent reading and making decisions over the many submitted grants for this year. We discussed the VR event at LIS. It was a huge success. Side note, I enjoyed watching Ms. Chelle Bose repair a pool filter and hearing Neil ask if he could step down off the roof and all he realized he had to take the goggles off. It was great. The trustees are a dedicated compassionate group of people who add depth and connection between our school and community. Many thanks to Bonnie Giglio and her keen leadership. I like that word, keen. She sure is amazing. A tease for next year events, September 6th will be a first annual fun run and November 14th will be handbag bingo. Project Graduation, I'm sure some of you have already seen. You can enter in a drawing for reserved VIP seating at the Cure Arena. Up to 15 family members per winning ticket and they're gonna draw two. So, go to the website, Project Graduation website in order to enter this drawing. And that's my report.
Thank you. Student Services.
Student Services was held on June 5th. In attendance was Vanessa Bacarsak and myself, Arundel Clark. Items to highlight, the committee discussed current open positions within the Student Services Department, as well as those that have already been successfully filled for the next academic year. We're pleased to share that preparations for the extended school year, ESY, and the connect programs are complete. Both are ready to launch July 7th. We're also excited to announce that Lawrence High School has been awarded a special Olympics grant for the 2025 and 2026 academic school year.
Thank you. Reconfiguration ad hoc committee.
Thank you. On Monday, Olga and Michelle and I met, Michelle Bose and I met with Dan Baldessari and Superintendent Clem, and we discussed the reconfiguration updates. So, we had taken a small pause, but in an exciting way, lots moving forward with the district focusing on instructional spaces and improving access. So, already this early on, there are really deep conversations with our instructional team and folks thinking about how our, all of our students and community members can access the space. Specifically, we talked a lot about the auditorium, which would be one of the first projects. Was really impressed to hear the focus on building out a cadence that has the least disruption, obviously, with school instruction time as much as possible. Lot was given to thinking about, you know, maximizing changes in winter break and summer. Something else that I think is important for the public to understand is because we were able to have this vote earlier this year, work is starting, which means that there will be an RFQ coming out this summer for, I'm gonna have to look at the notes, Principal Construction Manager. So, you know, that work will be starting behind the scenes in the summer, but it is exciting that it's starting now and we don't have to wait a whole nother year. So, that's exciting. And then we really focused on thinking about planning forward for how the community can weigh in. So, even on some of the plans that were discussed, we know that thanks to principals and other leadership, we were getting input from teachers, but we've planned out, is it official, we've planned out four community meetings already throughout the school year, which will be, still to be completely designed, but focused on reconfiguration, updates, and gathering input. Not as, not that that's the only thing, but that's just one step that we're already looking ahead. So, definitely, as we continue to meet, we'll be thinking about opportunities to make sure all community members can weigh in on the process and be fully up to date on the process. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Review of communications.
Just wanted to note, Sunday, there's gonna be a pride run. It's gonna start at Lawrence Shopping Center. My entire family is running. I've dragged my husband from his Father Day activities or what he thought he was doing. He's now running at 8:30 in the morning. So, please join us. There's a registration link that went out through Quick News. Miss Baldessari has it on the website. Martha Friend is here from Lawrence Neighbors Together. Really excited to launch this 5K. I personally have been training to get myself back in shape to run again, so I look forward to seeing you all there on Sunday morning.
I'll be doing it very slowly.
And there are vendors, there's other reasons to come other than to run, so please come out and see our students and celebrate with our families.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to move the reorganization items?
Go move.
Second?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say R1 through...
R60.
Six, R1 through R60.
So, it was a motion by Ms. Evans and seconded by...
Mr. Van Heys.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Groger.
Yes.
Dr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Martinez.
Yes.
Ms. Paschulie.
Yes.
Mr. Van Heys.
Yes.
Ms. Bose.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Personnel Committee report and Personnel Action Items.
Okay, personnel met June 4th, 8:15. In attendance, Dr. Robin Clem, Sean Fry, Olga Martinez, Arundel Clark, Kevin Van Heys, and Joanne Kroger, me. We reviewed our recommendations, including SEL, LES, Ben Franklin Preschool, K at Eldridge Park, LES, Slackwood, LIS Science, LIS Special Education, LHS English, LHS Business, LHS Special Education, and Math. Ben Franklin, an LES social worker. Ben Franklin School, 3rd grade. Lots of hard work and time has been given by our Personnel Department to fill these positions. Many thanks for the hours and dedication that the Personnel Department has given to our district. So, thank you. We currently are in the interview process for a Slackwood nurse, Lawrence High Special Education, and a social worker for Slackwood Elementary School. NJ SMART will be transitioning to NJ SLEDs, New Jersey Statewide Longitudinal Education Data System. I don't know who comes up with this, but there it is. For staff submissions moving forward, so you'll see us referring to that for the future. We discussed pending HR legislation that would remove certification burdens. And you'll see the certification that came out, which was about sunscreen, but I digress. We discussed Policies 1240, 1531, 3160, reviewed along with job descriptions for the Systems Engineer, User Systems Specialist, and a Job Coach position. On tonight, you'll find amendments for account numbers, locations, dates for leave replacements, corrections for salary, new business items, transfers for staff members, extension for end dates, and big news in the House, we have Allison Fisher, and she, after we take this vote, will be appointed the Position of Director of Student Counseling and Student Support. How exciting is this transfer? Appointments for summer staff nurses, staff pending background checks, sub assistants, IEP, GNT programs, district physician leave replacement, adjusted appointments, rescinding of an appointment, confirmation of appointments due to background clearances, several approvals, hold on tight, hiring for all staff for 2026 school year, curriculum development, professional development, translation services, math test scoring, unpaid leave, staff for jumpstart programs, World Peace Games, AI advisory coaches, extra duty positions, destination staff, Eagle Staff Summer Music, instructors for music, staff at high school maintenance, ground subs, summer CST staff, approved summer nurses, high school counselors to prepare for 2526 school year, NJ Stride Agreement, bus drivers in attendance, revised job titles, staff attending trainings for job descriptions, summer security monitors, payments of unused sick days and vacation days. With all that long-agenda items, I would like to move P1 through P94, please.
Second?
Tom with a motion and a second.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Groger.
Yes.
Dr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Martinez.
Yes.
Ms. Paschulie.
Yes.
Mr. Van Heys.
Yes.
Ms. Bose.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Congratulations. Yes. CIAPD Report and Instruction and Student Service Action Items.
I was gonna wait till after new business. We have a pause in place for you.
Yes. Hold tight. We just had a big agenda, so we'll get there.
CIAPD met on June 3rd at 8 o'clock in the board conference room. Dr. King, Ms. Groger, Ms. Paschulie, and myself were joined by Dr. Clem, Dr. Adam, Dr. Williams, and Mr. Neil Desai. Dr. Adam and Dr. Williams shared an update on cell phones at the high school. Their goal is to have students use their phones responsibly, balancing social and academic needs. They are also collecting feedback from both staff and students needed to change current guidelines in the future. Mr. Desai shared plans for new staff orientation, which will welcome all new Lawrence Township teachers. Sessions will help the staff get to know our district, schools, students, programs, and curriculum. The committee reviewed a couple of policies. Preschool information was shared. The district is making strong progress in preparing for this expansion year. We will serve up to 255 preschool students across all elementary schools and Lawrence Day School. Finally, we went on a field trip to LIS Career and Technical Education Program, held an exciting virtual reality event, and the students had the opportunity to explore career paths through VR simulations. On your agenda, there's professional development. I'd like to move items 1 through 7.
Second?
Tom with a motion and a second.
Just curious, did you also want to pick up OSS 2 in there as typical, or?
OSS 2 isn't OIS.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, that was seconded, all right. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Groger?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Paschulie?
Yes.
Mr. Van Heys?
Yes.
And Ms. Bose?
Yes.
Your motion carried?
And OSS, we have out-of-district placement and HIB. And with that, I'd like to move OSS 1 and 2.
Second?
Tom with a motion and a second.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
And Ms. Evans?
Yes.
And Ms. Groger?
Yes.
And Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Paschulie?
Yes.
Mr. Van Heys?
Yes.
Ms. Bose?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Okay. Finance Committee Report and School Business Management Action Items.
I'll just do one motion. So, Finance met on Friday. We had Ms. Bose, Ms. Evans, Ms. Paschulie, myself, Dr. Clem, Mr. Eldridge, and Ms. Buzz Luzny were present. As in typical fashion, Tom started off the meeting asking what we as board members hear and see in our travels. And it was suggested that we need to evaluate specifically access at Slackwood. We are hearing some issues about accessibility issues for those of us that are getting older and knocking around as well.
A few years left.
For some of the students and staff. And in typical fashion, Tom reported that we were already on it. So, they are actually already in the process of evaluating access ramps at Slackwood. Architect has already been contacted, is already making studies and recommendations, and really looking at what the options are and financing those so we can improve the accessibility there and even long-term looking at potentials of some elevators to go in. That presents significantly larger challenges because of the infrastructure requirements around that, but are already being worked on. Other thing that we spent some time talking about is the bench building, and one of the ways that they are actually ahead of that is the internal meetings that occur in the business office and the administration. So, there are weekly internal controls meetings, facilities meetings, bi-monthly meetings with custodial staff, monthly meetings with our secretaries. They're getting ready to add additional staff and PE managers meetings, really to facilitate the communications and really building the bench so that everybody is essentially cross-change, cross-trained, familiar with each other's functions. If anybody is absent, there are a multitude of people that not only know what's going on, who to contact, what to do, be able to fill in, which is one of the reasons why when we board members bring a topic, they're already ahead of us because those meetings are going on. The nice thing is, is that, as a person who's got stuck in lots of meetings, these are actually fruitful and productive and it really gives the district the ability to stay on top of everything and plan ahead. Other topics that we covered on Friday were the referendum. We're getting, obviously, regular updates on that as we move forward and we heard some of the background information on the logistics are already occurring. Bond sales are anticipated to be at the end of July with closing scheduled for August. We are also in the process of getting the environmental consultant, with them beginning work most likely in August. We covered the reorganization items, the 60 items that were on that are standard business topics. We also had a tutorial. It's nice, periodically, we'll go through SBM 3, the Board Secretaries Report. Tom did a fantastic job of walking the committee through what that report entails, all of the financial checks and balances that go through, both for proper stewardship of the district finances and disbursements. We also covered kind of hot topics, considering Friday was a nice warm day to begin with. We are mindful of the increases in utility costs and there are affirmative efforts in place, especially as we look forward to the summer months, where we go on summer hours to ensure that, you know, AC units aren't on, appliances that typically drain power and those types of things are either unplugged or removed during the summer months, lights are off and those types of things. We also covered our substitutes and overtime as our custodial staff are getting ready to transition from end-of-year activities to all the summer preparation activities. And also, our PEA status, things are moving forward, a lot of exciting actions. This has been really a primary initiative of Dr. Clem and the board. Since she's been in place, we have no waivers are necessary for the Lawrence Day School facility. So, that will be coming up online as the contract gets finalized on that. There's actually either new business or one of the...
Tonight.
Yeah, it's on tonight for the contract for the Lawrence Day School facility, which is fantastic. So, that's been all finalized.
Yeah, there were no material changes at all.
Perfect. And we're then working through all the logistics for members of the public that, you know, these initiatives all come with a host of work. Like, once you get them in place, then we've just gotta line up how to get them to class and where the classrooms are gonna be and all of that. So, all of that is ongoing. Staffing, there are several staffing appointments on tonight's agenda as well, so we're lining that up. And the monitoring of the program, so far, a success on all counts, which is fantastic. And then, other items that we covered, just obviously, the administration remains ready, willing, and able to assist with anything that we, the board, members of the public need. Outstanding lunch balances, we talked, and this will be a larger topic of conversation as we enter the summer months and get ready to proceed for the new year. Those balances are, you know, have been creeping up, lots of efforts to mitigate those, and so we'll start looking at what options are available. And lastly, Tom briefed us on, now that we're coming to the end of the year, just Oprah requests. So, those are Open Public Records Act requests. And in typical fashion, we have lots of them that come through the year, contracts, expenditures, finance types of things. So, it's a little bit of everything that the office handles. So, with that, eventful meeting, and I will now move items SBM 1 through 25.
Second?
Tom with a motion and a second.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Groger, sorry.
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Paschulie?
Yes.
Mr. Van Heys?
Yes.
Ms. Bose?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. It's an opportunity for public input. Anybody has anything they want to say? Please come up, state your name. Write down your address. Limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we move on. New business.
On new business, you'll see bus appointments, summer appointments, staff appointments, transportation settlements. I'd like you to pay particular attention to NB17, the appointment of Sharon Rello as Principal of LIS. And her, in the back of the room, you should take a look at the class of 2043. And with that, I'd like to move...
Pull NB1 and NB8, conflicts on both of those. Sorry, Tom.
Got it.
I saw the names. Okay, so, with...
Okay.
With that, I'd like to move 2 through 29 without 28.
About 8.
Without 1 and 8.
Oh, without 8.
Without 1 and 8.
Understood.
Okay. 2 through 29 without 1, without 8.
Without 1 and 8.
1 and 8, pull them out.
That one right there.
You know what.
I have you. Who was the second? That's motion made by Pepper, seconded by Mr. Van Heys, okay.
Can we just pause before we do our thing?
Sure.
Dr. Clem?
Yeah, I just want to say, you saw preemptive applause in the audience because sitting before us is two beautiful, wonderful leaders that have served our district for a very long time. So, when this motion passes, that does include Dr. Allison Fisher, who was on the regular agenda, and Sharon Rello, who is on under new business, which we waited all night for with her newborn. What I want to say tonight to the...
What I want to say tonight to the public is what we do really well here is grow leaders. We have a number of years of service between both of these ladies, and it is not often that we have an outgoing principal and the incoming principal sitting here tonight, getting ready to launch in their new roles. So Dr. Fisher, this is your official congratulations on your central office appointment, and Ms. Rello on the future of your July 1 start date as the Principal of LIS. After the motion passes, I do have something, so if you ladies could approach the podium.
Tom with a motion and a second.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Groger?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Pascui?
Yes.
Mr. Van Heys?
Yes.
Ms. Bose?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Congratulations to both of you.
If you'll notice, Ms. Rello is already wearing her LIS principal colors. And Dr. Fisher looks like she's already in her district colors.
Great. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
We have to move...
We still have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, 1 and 8.
Can I have a motion to move NB1 and NB8?
Someone's got to make the motion.
Pepper, you have to make it.
I'd like to move NB1 and 8.
And someone's got a second.
Second?
Okay, Mr. Clark. So I've got a motion from Ms. Evans and second of Mr. Clark for NB1 and 8. May I call the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Evans? Ms. Groger?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Pascui?
Yes.
Mr. Van Heys?
I abstain.
And Ms. Bose?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Yes.
I need to go back to school to learn how to move things, I guess. I don't know, I'm tired today. I apologize. Thank you, everybody. And can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for coming. Congratulations, Dr. Fisher, Ms. Rello. Don't forget your gowns.